I had anything from Michelle.
I've never seen the city news they told me.
How much bills we got?
Otherwise. Pretty well got all the state money that we're gonna get. We've gotten some sheriff's fees out there and. Seemed like we had something else, but anyway, we should, must round up some more. Get some of these bills paid. I think Chrissy paid six thousand twenty-five. They should have, I think, if I can find plans, I'm having the real estate switched over. Here shortly, so. Should be on key to get the bill sent out and everything to start collecting again.
How's y'all's training doing?
So far, so good.
What do you say it's gonna be switched over when?
We turned in a time, May first, to cancel for Thompson Reuters. So, they're confident it won't be switched over before then, but they wanted to give you that date. I do not have anything. Jeff don't want to make fun of me.
Pick my meat, too. I don't.
Poor Jeff.
I got raw shoulders and thick skin. I did not have been crushed a long time ago. It'll all be good.
Anyway, anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
See you later.
Okay, that's all yours.
We actually have one, one more truck that's not listed.
Okay, I guess just let them know in case some, you know, put on their. Diane Kinzer over across the street at Geyers.
Okay, I was trying to, I mean, I, I have the four on that one, but maybe she just missed it.
Well, that's an updated, I just got it like a week ago. I gave one to Ted, I just wanna make sure that everything's accurate on there. We're not paying too much or not paying enough, I guess. But, but the values look right, too?
Well, you know, I have no idea. I don't know how they came up with these values, to be honest with you.
Because if the values are lower than their price, our insurance would be cheaper, you know? Placement cost.
Wanna make sure you're not under insured.
Yeah, that's it, over or under, I mean, if we could just.
And that's just thing, I mean, when you, when you have like, I mean, I'll just pick this one out for instance. Our number twenty-nine international dump truck. It says, I don't know if that's the original value new, I guess it is on the top.
I don't know.
There is no agreed value at the bottom, I mean, that could have been the new value, but.
What is that? How much is it?
Seventy-four nine ninety-seven, but number one, there's no way that truck is ever even close to being worth that right now. But number two, if you tried to replace it, it'd be almost double that.
But no, where's it go?
That particular one was two thousand four.
How's it work? I mean, you, you, like Jeff, you're an partner, I mean, like a policy like that, do they, do they replace it what it is at that time? Or do, will they give you, how, how does that?
Uh, I mean, it's, it will be the value of it was the day of the loss.
Yeah.
They're not gonna replace more than that. I mean, even if you've got it insured for twenty thousand more than it's valued at, they're not gonna give you.
Yeah.
They're only gonna replace it if you get that. Anytime you're dealing with insurance, like, you're screwed.
Maybe I'll go over there and talk to Diane about it, see, see if she can shed some more light on it and whatnot.
Yeah.
I mean, these, these values that are listed on here, on the truck, on some of the dump trucks, are, I'm sure, the new values. If we're insuring for that amount, I mean, surely they're not gonna give us a new truck.
No, no.
Or even that value.
I say like, I mean, they're just gonna give you the value of what it was on the day of the accident.
Exactly.
Just replacement value is all they give you.
Might ask where they're coming up with those values on those individual.
Yeah.
Or how, how that is.
That dump truck now be hundred thousand, wouldn't it?
Lord, I don't know if you'd buy one for a hundred something, though.
No, I mean, if you wanted to buy a new dump truck set up the way we have.
I'd say the chassis is a hundred thousand.
I mean, it'd be about a hundred and forty.
Yeah, that's what I guess, maybe a, I'm gonna guess one fifty, 'cause.
You can buy the cab without a bed on it and make for right around a hundred, maybe.
That's what I'm gonna say. A cab and chassis, about a hundred thousand dollars, I'd say. I mean, if it had a fifth, just imagine if it's just a fifth wheel on it, that'd be about what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Checked into a road tractor twenty years ago, maybe, seventy-five thousand, four.
But I don't know. Okay. What's going on with you?
Can't say much out of the ordinary, just same, same stuff, I mean, we're, we're still about a, six weeks away from that paving job starting.
How long will that take? Do you mind?
Three weeks of work, but it won't be every day, like, out there all day, you know?
Won't we do that bridge that's still on chip one, though?
Skip it. We're not doing anything to it.
Can they grind it?
Can't get on it because of weight, the weight.
All the machine.
Plus, nobody's gonna wanna grind over the wood deck if we're afraid of getting into the wood.
It'd be like cartooning, cutting a limb off.
Uh, Joe Rocky Branch in Mount Mission, the sign, it's there, but some, I don't know what happened to it, but the, the post and all, just ninety degrees. Just knocked it over ninety degrees, way up high. Not be able to straighten it up, I don't know.
The post or the bracket? Some of them brackets are screwed up, your stop signs, anything?
Maybe the bracket, no, I think this is how, but I'm not sure.
Well, we had some, I mean.
Maybe it'll just take.
But wind, a couple of times, we had that high wind, I mean, it.
Really? Well, that may be what was, then.
I mean, it's twisted and bent, did, did some things to quite a few signs, so I will, I'll go out there and check that.
They'd be on the, well, yeah, Mount Mission, so, but east end.
Right now, we've been out the last couple of days trying to fix some of our coppers and stuff on, on Country Club Road. So we'll have it done, you know, ready to overlay, you know, when I'm gonna get some of those concrete sections or on the ends. They tend to, you know, separate and fall off, and that's, we're out there kind of the last couple of days here, probably out there today, too. Trying to get them in, sections put back on and ride to where it, suck holes and stuff through the road, you know?
I hadn't heard of people, nobody tells me you're doing good.
All right.
They just all tell me you're doing a great job.
Thank you. I'll, I'll answer y'all later.
Okay.
Yep.
Have a good one.
Sorry, man.
I was okay, Lou.
Is that motion served?
Yeah.
Make sure I read the right minutes.
How's everything going?
All right, I guess.
Have a good day.
So far, um.
Let's hope it stays that way.
Hope it stays that way.
I went up there and talked to Jeremy about that water coming in the building. And we're gonna run a full-pleg investigation.
Okay.
First chance we get, so we can get it nailed down.
Yeah, Franklin County, we've got a, we're moving out of the NX building, which was about this age, to a different one in about a month. And we're on the second floor with no elevator, and we've been there forever, so. We're moving to about forty-eight percent less space than we have now, so we got a little work to do.
You gonna hack the science, or?
But, uh, sewer gas coming up and a bit of everything else, it's an old hotel. So on the bright side, every room had a bathroom, unfortunately, all of that seventy-year-old sewer pipe is all going about the same time.
Is that the work, Benton? Are you from Benton?
What's Franklin?
You know where that mine and maintenance offices are?
Over by the high school?
I don't know, how'd I get there? Go down thirty-seven, uh, go down thirty-seven?
You, uh, no, you get off at the exit, which is around fourteen there.
I know where that is.
And go east and around the square, and it's just over the railroad tracks before you get to the high school.
On the left?
On the left.
Okay, I've been there one time, it's been.
You'll go past the, uh, the jail and the state attorney's offices and all that over down there.
Okay.
Was in Springfield this weekend at YMCA Youth and Government, the sixty-eighth time, and that's happened, where the kids get to be senators, representatives, governor, judges, and use the chambers and sit the chairs and have their picture on the big screen and debate things. Get two groups from this part of Southwest Franklin, with Sessom, later, Sessom did have a couple of presiding officers, Speaker of the House, President of the Senate elected. And this is, I mean, this is from Chicago and the collar counties all the way down, so the kids also get to see and work with, um, kids from all over the state. And hopefully by the end of the weekend, figure it out, wherever you're from, it's still not that much different. Which is even better than just the sports competition, where you're gonna be competing and not having a meeting and trying to work together as much. But, uh, a neat event, um, but I can tell you, this table's in better shape than the desk and furniture in the governor's reception area, which is, I was doing attendance, so that's where I was set up. They haven't spent on that in a long time either. Do you have a budget worked out, what do you think? Uh, no. Nor did I see anything, so the only governor's desk for every case, I think, no. Would've been nice, um. I do have one school district up my way. Toss that over in there. Struggling to meet payroll, and I happen to be in Springfield for meetings, State Board of Education when that happens, so we're, they're working with State Board on cash flow. Part of the issue is, um, kids like payments, but as you know, if you don't have all the hatches battened down when you head into the storm, you're gonna hit it a little sooner than, than other districts. Quarterly report, a couple pages of, of different places I've been and activities involved in, I'm back, starting on page four. Mr. Worthing came on, was it October, November, as our truancy officer, and has been busy getting up to speed. We've, uh, working with the state attorney's office and others in the system. Fifty-six referrals for the, the first step, uh, people that continue to have issues, we're at twenty-nine there, and he's had some transfer review boards, which is where we get together, state attorney, any social agencies, others. Look, you're gonna have charges filed on you if you continue on this path, um, what's going on, if there's things that we can do to help. And so he's, uh, been able to reach out to those, too. Teacher certification is our, our, our biggest work there on page five, and then, uh, finger-putting background checks, we have done two hundred and fifty-seven out of our office since July first. So, stay busy there. Uh, the GED testing number is just the ones that test at John A. Logan, um, that we test. Shawnee College also has a testing center, so that's where probably most in, in these southern counties go. We do issue the certificates, though, so we've issued thirty of those this year, and then we have the records for everybody. Uh, we've talked about school bus driver training before, uh, again, we're gonna do the refresher course down here. Believe it or not, we've, across the four counties, already trained a hundred and two this year, and yet you still drive through towns and see the buses with, we need employees. And, um, it's gonna be interesting to see, and I think we touched on it, that the danger of buses are safest way to get to and from school, but seat belts, no seat belts, depending on how that's done, does that gonna mean more buses, more bus routes? Which then means you'll need more drivers, which we're not keeping up with that anyway, so. Cost with that. Mechanic, Vento Federal Homeless Grant, and again, our federal money is flowing right now. Forty-five identified in the two districts in Massac County. Page six, we have, again, a large federal grant, the SSOS Grant Program. That is part of, was part of No Child Left Behind, now that's been replaced by another federal program, ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act, that was passed with bipartisan support. Last week, however, uh, the education department pulled the rules for right now on how to implement this. So the state had approved a plan, everybody's kind of in line to approve things, we can get going, but they pulled the rules, so we're kind of in limbo. And, and so everybody's waiting, I asked a question on a conference call yesterday, so does that mean some of our federal money there may or may not be there? Oh, it'll be there. Yeah, we'll see, so, again, we kind of operate limbo. We have now inspected all of the sixty-plus buildings across the four counties for the year with the fire marshal, and then we're still doing our day-to-day activities. And, back on page eight, Star Quest in Johnson City, we've had twenty-eight through the year, here, we've had eight, and I think it was here, you asked me, it could've been Johnson County, do students go back to the regular schools out of that program? Yes, we've had kids go spend their time, do the things they need to do, and then, um, go back to the homeschool district, which is what we hope for. And of course, we're still in the juvenile detention center in, in Franklin County doing that. We are finally staffed up for the first time, uh, to what we have open. Everybody but the, the Reds there, um, they've moved on to other things since the year started.
Matt?
Yes, sir.
Is Jimmy Haley, is he still working in emergencies, or?
No, he, he retired.
What it says here, part-time?
Yeah, he was part-time.
Oh, okay. Well, I had another question over here on.
Which I should've put in there for Mr. Worthing, too, I see now on that sheet.
I see, now, the truancy officer, they don't send out the letters, do they, or? They just get a notice from the school if they're.
The, well, uh, the truancy officer and our secretary here, Jan.
Yeah.
Work together, he looks over them, she prints them out, he signs them, um, and gets them out, so they.
I mean, would she give him a letter that told that these children were?
Uh, the schools make a ref, a referral.
Okay.
So, once they get to a certain point, school sends it to us and fills out the form, 'cause we've gotta have all these stats, because that's a grant-based program, which, incidentally, that's a state grant, so we haven't seen the truancy money this year.
Or blame.
But the program, I, I, I've been happy with, uh, we've had a couple of changes this year, all of my truancy officers this year, it seemed like we're really going. And hope the check comes, uh, which is kind of where we are, um, our, our, our state grants are, we're waiting like the school districts are, uh, the state aid for our schools is flowing, um, that's not as much as used to be. So, they do that, he oversees it, uh, and then, once they're in our system, then we, he continues to track and monitor the schools. If they continue, uh, as he meets with them, as, as he gets calls from them, and then move on to the next step, and they just track them throughout.
A tardy letter, that, a tardy to me means just late for twice?
What?
That's not the same as not going at all, is it?
Correct. The reason we have tardy letters in there was, and it's kind of been a district-by-district request. If they've got somebody that's tardy a lot, or like a grade school student, where you know it's, it's the parent, that's not a good thing either, if they continue to miss the start of the day.
Right.
So, we offered to help, uh, with whatever the school's doing. One more, a little bit higher authority saying, uh, look, if you continue to be tardy, you're also on our radar, uh, and are there issues, again, we're trying to solve it, are there issues causing you to be late this much? And what can we do to?
Help.
To help? So, that's just a tool in the toolbox, the grant doesn't really address that issue, but, uh, the, the step one is, is both a letter, and then, um, as Mr. Worthing goes out to the school district, uh, to the school, uh, the principal, maybe meeting with a student or student and parent, said, here, meet the truancy officer, if you continue to miss, and, and we presume the schools have been talking to the kids all along. You're gonna get to deal with this gentleman.
At your house.
Potentially. Step two then is, uh, as they continue to miss, then a more formal meeting at the school, and if they continue, the step three meeting is here. And, uh, I guess he.
Is in the state attorney's office.
Uh, yes. So, suddenly you're off your own turf, you're on county turf, and go through the metal detector and all those things, and then it turns out if, um, some of these same people end up being at the, uh, in the court system for other things, and have been startled to see Mr. Worthing, also on, on those days, oh, you're here, too.
Same lines, though.
The, uh, so trying to address those issues, and, uh, and then, I, I know we've even, um, did figure out a residency issue from, um, one of the, uh, one or two of the people who, uh, had been missing at their school a lot, and it turns out they, that wasn't the school they were supposed to be in to begin with, so they had two issues.
Well, are you, are you over the South Park?
Homeschools? No. Um, in Illinois, homeschools are barely mentioned in the law, they are considered non-public, uh, just like if you had a church school or whatever. Non-public schools in Illinois can apply to be recognized, and I've got three in my region that are, um, the Catholic grade school in West Frankfurt, the Catholic grade school in Heron, and a Christian school in Heron. There aren't that many hoops to jump through, but there's a checklist, here are the things we agree to do, here's our schedule, our calendar, we try to have teachers who have degrees and those kinds of things. So you can apply for that, but otherwise, it's, it's unregulated, and, um, if they can prove that they're offering some kind of instruction, but again, there's not really any teeth in the law to cover that. And for the people doing it correctly, it's not a problem, it's the people that say they're homeschooling, there are no schooling.
Well, that's what I wanted, is there any kind of tests that the kids have to take at the end of the road?
And, and in fact, that, that's one of the troubling things, as, as the federal education secretary has talked about, once more, choice and, and once more of those things, and being able to use a taxman to go to private schools. When the question's been asked, well then, will those kids have to pass a test as well, like all the public school kids do? No. Which doesn't seem quite fair.
It don't seem. What, can you homeschool and homeschool also, or just stop at grade school?
No, you can.
All the way through?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And there's online things, there's, uh, um, some homeschool, uh, organizations, um, usually about once a year, we had a truancy issue, uh, where we, uh, pushed a little, because they're, they're not showing us what needs to see to verify, and we'll get a letter from the attorneys at the homeschool, whatever organization is, about once a year. But again, uh, if you're doing what you're supposed to be doing, it's not a problem. If it's, we're at the school, or we're, we're going to do this, and, uh, and then also make sure when they make the decision to do it, they realize just what they're getting into. The time commitment and the effort and, and all of that. But, uh, when they try to address that in Illinois with laws, um, if they propose something, those people doing it right gather up pretty quickly and make their voices heard.
Or not like grade school, as it like. Six different classes, I mean, you've got English and, uh, math, how many classes is this? In a full day, how many, how many is different?
For, for compliance purposes, for being recognized in Illinois, uh, grade schools are supposed to have instruction in English, and math, and social studies, and science, and health, and PE. So, you're supposed to be covering those things.
About six. So that would be, what, what, forty-five minutes in the class, or?
Thirty, forty-five, hour, I mean, um.
Some might be different, too.
Uh, most schools have been trying now to at least figure out a way to work an hour of reading in a day, uh, and maybe not just reading class, but different ways they attack it, um, throughout the course of the day. Then high schools, uh, correct them, supposed to offer those same things. Now, something else we run into, um, as people get diplomas from, from these different groups, um, that's all between them and whoever they get the diploma from. And if that organization closes or ceases to exist, I mean, we've got phone calls before, well, do you have our stuff at your office? No, that's.
That's your stuff.
That's your stuff, yeah, that's between you and the company. Well, the company closed. That's unfortunate. So that's issue. Uh, when, when homeschool, uh, kids who homeschool might, or non-public school for that matter, return back to their, if they wanna re-enroll in public school, um, there are some placement tests, just trying to figure out, make sure the kid is where, whatever their information says they are. 'Cause you don't wanna, if the kid's not prepared for the grade that they're supposed to be at, you don't wanna throw them in there and, and start them.
Fail, yeah.
Yeah, instead of fail, so, uh, our schools do that. And, and what are the numbers out there? I think we have, you can register, but then again, you don't have to, if we don't know they're out there. I mean, we will get calls occasionally asking to check on somebody, uh, if people see kids out, and if they can show some kind of, uh, proof. If they can't, then we do look into the truancy process, but, uh, that's a tiny road to get there.
I don't see a, a parent has time to homeschool.
It, uh, it's a bit of an effort.
Yeah.
So.
Especially a single parent, you know? Two people, man.
You're not gonna be able to do it in work.
No, you have to have, somebody's gonna have to have a pretty good income to.
Yeah.
Keep the cash flowing.
Yeah. But, uh, otherwise, plug along, waiting to, to see what happens, and, uh, trying to help our districts best we can.
Yeah. Same gentleman will take care of the yard this year.
I assume, should we call, or?
I could text him, just tell him to take care of the stuff.
Okay. Yeah, that's you, north, north of fine last year. Yeah, already. But I guess at least for those who, uh, need to make it up from the, uh, snow, the snow they didn't get to shovel, shovel around, um, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
But, uh, what a wacky winter.
Strange. I never saw one like this, I believe.
Anyway, anyway, thanks for, thanks for, uh, for your assistance and help and et cetera.
All right.
Allers.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, you're good.
Keep Jeremy going down there.
Try to keep mine toast.
We'll see.
The board, man?
Yep.
Wonder how many people checked, you know?
I have no idea. Couple of hundred, probably.
Yeah, 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 it was. I guess Bill Jackson.
We need to make a motion to get it approved.
Yeah.
We guess, uh, we've all. Read it in the first, already, haven't we, I mean, as far as being right, what one?
I personally haven't looked at it, I feel all right, but then I just wanna make sure.
You all have a chance to look at it, it's, 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 uh,
it'll be available for people to review, it's time to move onward.
Would anyone ma- wanna make a motion to approve the two thousand seventeen budget?
I'll make that motion.
Would anyone want a second?
I guess I will.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Budget passed.